Okay, I'd like to move on to item number one, call to order. The meeting, my name is Alicia Bedidas, I'm the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee Coordinator, and I'd like to welcome all Kern County Public Works staff, the committee, the West County Council, and guests that are present on the call. And now I'd like to move on to item number two, roll call. When you hear your name, please let me know you're in attendance. Daniel Harrison. Karen Sanders.
Here.
Karen. Linda Martin.
Present.
Andrea Medina.
Here.
Thank you, Gary Ananian.
Uh, present.
Thank you. David Caddell. Lee Kinsey. And Christopher McGeehee.
Present.
Thank you, Chris. A quorum has been met. So now I'd like to move on to item number three on the agenda. The approval of the resolution for Keep Kern Beautiful Committee to hold remote meetings. A copy of the resolution number 2022-005 was provided in the email attachment for your records. This is a resolution of the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee for the period of May 10th, 2022 through June 8th, 2022, pursuant to the Ralph and Brown Act. Um, may I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution, Karen Sanders.
Thank you, Karen.
I'll second. You know.
Um, was that Andrea's second?
I'll second, Andrea, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, um, moving on to item number four. The approval of the meeting minutes from April 20th, 2022. Uh, this, the meeting minutes were also included with the agenda, uh, for your records. Um, may I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 20th, 2022?
I'll motion that, that's Gary.
Thank you, Gary. May I have a second?
I'll second, this is Chris.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, um, any opposed? Okay, hearing none, um, the motion will carry, thank you. Okay, going back to the agenda, now I'd like to move on to item number five. Um, the new business. We had a Keep Kern Beautiful cleanup hosted in each of our districts last month, um, to honor Earth Day as well as the Great American Cleanup. Um, for any of the committee members who are on the call, some of you have shared your cleanup efforts with me, which have been great. For example, Gary and Ananian's group up in Lake Isabella had a great turnout. But, um, if you guys, each of the districts, when a contact can provide a good brief recap of your cleanup, that would be great. So you could share with the committee. Um, Gary, would you like to just give a brief update on your cleanup?
Yeah.
One?
Yeah, we had a great turnout, um, our numbers were a little down. Uh, we usually do about 100 people for Earth Day. I think the gas prices had a play in that. Most of our volunteers typically come from the Bakersfield, LA area, but we did see some, we saw people that came as far as San Diego, Long Beach, and even Fresno, who came to our cleanup. Uh, so we had about 45 people total in attendance. And the last check we did at, uh, the dump on the weight was, I believe, just about 2,000 pounds of trash that we collected, about a dozen tires. Um, so yeah, we had a pretty good turnout.
Wow, that's great. And then you, um, you had you focused on like the Lake Isabella shore, um, the Boulder Gulch area?
Well, we did, we cleaned, um, the Wofford Heights side of Lake Isabella, which is all free, uh, that, it's all like day use area. Um, the lake is, uh, the Lake Isabella side of the lake has been concessioned out to a private management company. So, um, they are now responsible for the maintenance and the trashing on that side of the lake. So, but the left side of the lake is still under like parts of the county and the federal. Um, so that will fall under like the volunteers to manage.
Yeah, and you mentioned that you guys collected a dozen tires. And would you say like most of the trash was around the campgrounds, like bottles, leftover cans, things like that?
Lots of loose trash, um, there was a few small, um, illegal dumps, like household stuff, construction material and, uh, stuff like that that we found.
Okay, that's all. Well, thank you, Gary, thank you for that. Okay, um, I know we have Karen Sanders on the call for District Two, and, um, I know Lynn Black, I'm a former Keep Kern Beautiful Committee member, was a point of contact for the cleanup that took place in Boron. Um, but Karen, do you have any updates that you'd like to share with the committee and guests?
Sure, I did not participate in the cleanup in Boron, and I don't have any statistics for you. Um, however, for the Great American Cleanup in October, I am trying to coordinate with the California City, uh, Chamber of Commerce, so that we can tackle California City Boulevard. I think it's one of the, um, it's on the list of, um, areas that need attention. And, um, so in October for the Great American Cleanup, we'll have a project for that.
That sounds great. Awesome, already looking ahead. Like that, thank you, Karen, and I will follow up with Lynn, um, on the collection, I, I mean, the cleanup numbers for the Boron Cleanup, thank you. Okay, for District Three, um, I don't, I believe Dave, yeah, David Caddell is not on the call, but, um, we were able to, um, Kim Baldwin was, was able to assist with helping coordinate the cleanup that took place in the Oildale Community. Um, we, um, Kern County Public Works also had a booth at their Love Oildale event that Saturday morning. So we were able to view about a group of maybe 30 people that were out in the, near the Standard Park area of Oildale, picking up trash, cutting weeds, and doing a lot of great work. Um, so that was great. And they also had a bulky waste collection event nearby, where they were, um, encouraging nearby residents to drop off all that. So I'm, I will be following up with, um, David Caddell on those numbers as well. Okay, and for District Four, Linda, would you like to provide an update?
Sure, okay, so in the beginning of the month, uh, we started out with, um, a bulk item, community drop-off on the second. Also Kiwanis did, um, Caltrans cleanup along Highway 43. I don't have the number of bags, but we had.
We had participated.
I think I said either images. Things echo really bad. It, it looks like Dan is, it's echoing for me for some reason.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know why it keeps echoing when I talk.
Yeah, yeah, Dan, um, would you mind just, um, muting your line, that might help echo?
I think it was because I was trying to get on my phone, and it was. But all cut me.
Okay, thank, thank you, Dan.
Okay, is it better now? It froze, okay. Um, and then we also did the, on the 16th, we had the, um, tree planting, uh, community cleanup that was in a cul-de-sac where we planted some trees and some rose bushes. That was with the Lions Club, I think, I get you the pictures of that. Um, and then on the 23rd, we had, uh, the compost giveaway um, in Shafter at the Youth Center, and then we also had the Women's Club doing, um, the walk-around cleanup, um, and meet at Tin Cup for top coffee. So I just sent you how many folks did that, and in between there, we had, um, um, some other cleanups that happened in Lost Hills, and I think, um, you were on the emails with, uh, the fellow from Wasco that was helping me out with that. And, um, then I, I know it was kind of late, but we had another Wasco cleanup this last weekend. It was a bulk item event, and then community members too, and we're just kind of getting the data from that. I know I'm a little past April, but we couldn't get anything else scheduled in April, so that just happened. So I'll, I'll get you pictures and, and maybe some weights and bags.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Okay, moving on to District Five. I know Chris McGeehee was a point of contact for the cleanup that took place in East Bakersfield, off of Mount Vernon and Central Avenue. Chris, would you like to provide an update?
Yeah, we, uh, I mean, we had a small but mighty crew out there. Um, had seven volunteers. Uh, actually, Dan was one of them, uh, that came over to help out there, so. Um, we had seven volunteers, though, we did about 25 to 30 bags worth of trash, as well as bulky items that were wood, shopping carts, um, just miscellaneous plastics and so forth that were just scattered along the area there. Um, we actually did have a couple of guys that were residents in the area, um, that stopped and did one bag each, that made it kind of interesting and nice that the community actually gave back, uh, when they saw us out there as well, so. Um, but all in all, it was, it was a good day and good event.
That's great. 25, 30 bags, that's a, it's a lot for seven people. So you're right, small but mighty, thank you, Chris. Okay, um, Dan, I know you joined the call, and it was great to hear from Chris that you had, uh, joined the cleanup efforts in the East Bakersfield area. Um, Gary and Ananian did provide an update for District One, um, that took place in the Lake Isabella area. Great turnout, a lot of, um, collection of 2,000 pounds of trash was collected, as well as a dozen tires. And, so that was a great turnout for that, for District One. Um, so do we have any questions or comments from the, anybody on the call or members of the public? Okay, hearing none, um, let's move on to, um, item number five, a new business, um, section B. Um, I know we had touched a bit about this, um, at our last meeting about the Keep Kern Beautiful Cleanup Supplies. Um, I'm hoping that we can discuss it a bit more so that, uh, in our next meeting on June 15th, we can actually vote on some items to purchase for future cleanups for all of the committee members to utilize. Um, we do have, as mentioned, we do have $2,000 of available, uh, funds for the committee. Um, so we will be utilizing that money. We had talked about, um, possibly purchasing grabbers, as well as, um, paint rollers, and also like paint pans, so for graffiti removal. Is this something we, um, as a committee, we kind of agree upon so that we can start looking at pricing for certain products and presenting that so that we can vote on that at our next meeting? So, uh, grabbers, paint rollers, um, as well as paint buckets. Any other committee members have any suggestions on items? I mean, we, what we can do is come up with like maybe five items, for example, and then on the, um, at our next meeting, we can decide on, you know, how much, vote on how much you want to, which products we want to purchase and how much we want to spend on each. So, um, just getting a general idea of what you guys are looking for, um, I don't, that would, that would help to discuss today.
Alicia, when you said bucket, um, on the rollers that we need for graffiti.
You know, we can also have some recyclable tote bags that we could, you know, put our Keep Kern Beautiful logo on in the future, um, for like promotional item purchases. But for now, um, I think we should, um, spend today's brainstorming and next month's, uh, meeting on cleanup supplies. So any other suggestions, are these grabbers, paint rollers, and paint pans a good start for the committee?
Alicia, on the, you had mentioned buckets, when we have the rollers for graffiti cleanups, they're actually more like a tray pan.
Sorry about that.
If that, can you hear me, okay?
Linda, can you hear me?
Alicia, can you hear me, okay?
I'm on mute.
Okay, I.
I can hear Linda, but I don't think you can hear her, Alicia. Um, she's talking, but I don't know if you can hear her or not.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it was, it was me, my headphones are not like, they're plugged in, but I'm sorry about that. Can you guys hear me, okay?
I can hear you, Alicia, can anyone hear me?
I can hear you, I think, I think I was the only one that couldn't hear you, I'm sorry about that. Go ahead, Linda.
Okay, on the graffiti, uh, on the rollers, um, we can't use the buckets. It's more of like a pan, because the rollers are, uh, you know, about a foot long. So it's almost like a pan, you put them in, and you roll them, and then, um, you have to get sleeves to, um, to, you know, to reuse the rollers. The rollers can be used, reused, but the sleeves actually are wasted after we're done with the graffiti cleanup.
Okay.
And then they also have like, um, plastic trays that you could put within, that's like a liner on some of those. I've gotten it at Home Depot or Lowe's. Um, if you need any help, just let me know, I could send you images of what I've bought for the graffiti cleanup, but that helps out.
Oh, yeah, that would be a big help. Thank you, and yeah, I remember, um, talking to Michelle about this, and she did mention the sleeves.
Okay.
Too, that we would also need to include.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have, you know, grabbers, paint rollers, the paint pans, um, and then the sleeves, and then a couple of other items that Linda had mentioned that she'll share with me. Um, any other items? Any suggestions? Dan?
Oh, alright, let's see. Go ahead, go ahead, Gary.
Oh, I have a suggestion, um, there's a company that we use out of LA for our graffiti removal stuff. Um, they are a really good company, they, they have their products can be used just about on anything. We use them for everything in the river, and on the river, and around the shoreline. Everything they have is eco-friendly, and they have everything from whatever you can imagine for like traffic signs where it can remove the graffiti without harming the paint or the ink on the sign, um, to brick, mortar, whatever you want. And they also have a portable, um, power wash, pressure washer, inside of a Pelican case that's got rollers on it. And we had fundraised for it a couple of years ago, cost us about $2,000. But the thing can be taken anywhere, so we can take that on the trail. Uh, it comes out of our truck, we can take it to the shoreline on the lake. Anywhere that where the truck can't go, this thing has wheels on it, and we can roll it, and it's not heavy. Um, so that's something we can look into. Um, I have one, um, we got one a couple of years ago, and it's great, we love it. And it's very simple for us, it works out because we have some things that are on trails that we can't take the truck into. And so this thing just rolls with us.
Nice. Yeah, if you can also send me that information, Gary, or just about that company, and I can look, I'm going to try to share that with the committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gary, how does it remove the graffiti?
Um, it's a pressure wash, so you buy this like solution from the company as well, and you have to spray the solution on the graffiti. You wait a few minutes, and then you spray it again, and then you wait a few minutes, and then you can either hand scrub it, and then pressure wash it, or pressure wash it, or hand scrub it. It depends on like how old the graffiti is, how thick the paint is. Um, sometimes we can just like spray it on, and depending on the surface, like a slick granite up here, it can just wipe right off. And sometimes we just have to like scrub it with our hands, or sometimes a pressure washer will work on its own.
Wow, that's great. Thank.
Yeah, so I'm gonna try to find this, the link to it, and I'll send it to you guys right now.
Alright, thanks, Gary. I'm curious, um, so you guys are seeing a lot of graffiti on like the boulders out there and things like that?
Yeah, yeah, mainly in the river, on the, in the canyon, on, along 178. We're seeing it, we used to see it up, on the upper river before, but that's really calmed down a lot. We're not seeing that anymore, but we're seeing it in the first 20 miles of the Kern Canyon, from Bakersfield up to like, um, right below Keysville, we're starting to see a lot of the graffiti. Um, so it's starting to get a problem, it's mostly on the highways, stuff that we can access. And then some of the turnouts, we're finding it down on the river that we're gonna have to, we're hiking down, or we're climbing down rocks to get to these areas to paint the graffiti. Um, but it's mostly, I think 10% of it's gang graffiti, the rest is like John Loves Crystal, you know, it's like stuff like that, a lot of couples graffiti, teenager, high schooler stuff is what we're seeing a lot of.
I know, they think it's okay because it's in the name of love, you know, like, nope, not okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks, Gary, um, Linda, do you have a question?
No, I'm sorry, I had to switch to my phone, and I don't know how to use this. Um, oh, did that take it down? I'm so sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay, don't worry, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss you. Okay, alright, well, thanks, everybody, this is great being back. Um, so what, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, you know, when I hear from Gary and then Linda on a couple, on those items, um, I'll get together some pricing, um, within our budget, of course, and if, on a few different, um, products that are, you know, price efficient, and, um, present those to us at our upcoming, um, committee meeting in June. And then we can vote on that then, and then move forward with, um, the purchasing of those items for the committee to share. Now, um, in addition to that, um, I would like to go over and get your guys' feedback on the procedures for renting, or, you know, being like, these items being loaned to each of the committee members. Um, are you guys okay with like it being like, like pretty much a signup sheet? Like a first, first come, first served basis? Does that work for everybody, or if you guys have suggestions on a procedure that might work for everybody? To make sure that everyone's getting a chance to utilize all of the supplies, and they're not being, you know, not one district's using them more than the other, unless, you know, of course, those districts don't have cleanups events, and we just want to make sure that they're being evenly distributed. So, um, any suggestions or comments on that? And then, of course, we would keep the supplies at our office, the Kern County Public Works Administration Building off of 2700 M Street. And, um, we can always, um, you know, I can always work in coordinating either to get the supplies to you, or possibly meet halfway. So those will always be options to make those available. But, okay, so, um, for now, we can, um, you know, plan on having like a signup sheet for these products, and then, uh, it being based on a first come, first served basis.
Yeah, makes, makes sense. You end up with, is it common that people want them at the same time that needs to be managed?
Yeah, or like, say like there's an event happening like that we're kind of aware of, that maybe say, for example, we know that one district, District One, for example, and District Two are having an event on a Saturday. But until like they reach out to me to request those items, then that's kind of what will determine. So it will need to be like an active, like reaching out to myself to secure those items, and whoever would do that first in that sense. So if you, if you let, if you let me know ahead of time like that you're having an event, whether it's a month, two months out, then we would, we would consider, you know, making those supplies available to that person. If that works for everybody, okay. And if for whatever reason we have like one district come up to me, and then like the next day or so that other committee member come up to me, we can work about like splitting those product, splitting up the supply so that each district can benefit from the supply. So we'll, we'll find a way to work out, but it would just, we would just want to accommodate as many people as possible that set up. Okay, um, any other questions or comments from the committee, or anybody on the call? Okay, hearing none, um, I'd like to move on to item number six. Um, we'll be hearing a presentation from Kim Baldwin, the Public Works Maintenance Supervisor, and while she provides an update on recent and upcoming community cleanup efforts. Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome. So I am presenting for Karina, uh, so the Kern County Public Works Illegal Dumping and Events Update. The Rapid Stats, so countywide, they cleared 2,078 dump sites that totaled 436 tons of waste being taken to the landfills. And mattresses collected countywide were 339, and of the 339, 244 of them were able to be recycled, which is a great number. Um, so they were kept out of the landfills. Uh, there were 181 encampments cleared countywide also. Household hazardous waste and temporary collection events. Uh, May 21st, there's one at Kern Valley at the Transfer Station. May 28th, at the Ridgecrest Sanitary Landfill. I'm sorry, I apologize, the Ridgecrest Special Waste Facility. On June 4th, there will be one at the Tehachapi landfill, and June 11th and 25th, uh, the Ridgecrest Special Waste Facility. Bulky waste collection events. On April 23rd, in Lake Isabella, uh, there were 47 customers that came through, and totaled 5.62 tons of waste collected. On April 30th, in Prazier Park, 15 customers came through, 1.25 tons of waste was collected. And on May 21st, there will be a bulky waste collection event, uh, in Ridgecrest at the Leroy Jackson Park. And that's from 8 to noon. And during Earth Day, there was a California Clean Initiative Event. They, Eastern Kern did a tire amnesty day, which allowed people to bring in their tires, residents to bring in tires at no charge to, um, four of the facilities. So at the Boron Sanitary Landfill, 350 tires were collected by residents. The Mojave Roseman Landfill, 143 tires were brought in. At the Ridgecrest Landfill, 230 tires were brought in, and into Tehachapi, 68 tires. The grand total was 791 tires, uh, brought in that day. And that's all she has.
Thank you, Kim. Back to your board on.
Can I ask a question about the, so, I, I ride my bicycle out by the river, by Riverwalk, which I know I leave the city, but they did clean out a bunch of encampments, but they do it with a skip loader, which still leaves a whole lot of residual trash in the area. Is there, is there any? What would you suggest? How would we clean it up so it's, it's not, I mean, the, the majority of it's gone, but it certainly isn't trash-free, there's still quite a bit of smaller items that are there that the skip loader didn't, didn't get. And I, and it's not a, so I'm just questioning, as I ride out there, what we can do about it, or pick anything.
So, um, Dan, you're saying that this is like, these areas used to be homeless encampments?
Right.
And that's been cleared out?
Yes.
I mean, gosh, I, I don't know the procedures, um, as far as like, I, I, I know what you're saying, because I've seen the same thing, where like, there's still that residual leftover trash that kind of nobody wants to touch because for safety and health reasons, um, I don't know, it probably would just be, um, trying to get a group out there and clean up effort, just to go out and pick up that extra loose trash that was missed. Um, but that, that could also be feedback provided to, um, and I believe it would be the city that would have overseen that encampment removal. But like, for example, like, um, our Rapid Crew, I believe, um, that handles that. It would just be, if that were the case of a county maintained area, that, that would be just feedback that we provided to the Rapid Crew, and let them know that, you know, we're hearing this feedback, that there's still some residual trash left, and there's, you know, we could make sure to get that picked up as well.
Mm-hmm, so do you suggest contacting somebody who will get the city, though?
Um, I would, yeah, um, possibly. Um, I don't know, Kim, did you think their code compliance manages that, or?
I believe so. I, I believe their code compliance does, I, and I'm not really sure. I know our code compliance only handles encampments when they're on, uh, private property, and our Rapid Crew does that, it, for not private property. Um, I, I don't know if the city has a group of people like our Rapid Crew, they may. Um, and if they do, again, giving them feedback, letting them know that collecting the majority of it is good, but when there's still litter out there, it, it still looks terrible. And, and litter begets litter. So, I mean, people are gonna add to it. So if, if it doesn't get cleaned up completely, then it's something that they need to, to work on. Uh, or maybe they won't have a suggestion um, on, on who to speak to in the city.
Do you, should that you suggest, maybe should I, the thought just came to, to give a call to keep Bakersfield beautiful to that group and see if there is a, if they, I'm sure, I mean, see if there's a collaboration or we can create a day or they know somebody, and I don't, I haven't really spoken to that group, but I'd be happy to, to see if we have a common vision around the problem.
Yeah, yeah, Dan, I can get you connected, or I, I even can reach out to Jessica with that question. Jessica Felix is the coordinator for Keep Bakersfield Beautiful.
Okay.
Um, so she would have more information on that or just how to address that. She also, um, works with the City of Bakersfield Solid Waste Division.
Okay.
The Community Outreach Team. So, uh, yeah, so she'll be a good person that, um, we can get in contact with. I could, um, reach out to her and I'll see you on that email.
Okay, great. And I'll, then I'll follow up with her and, and see if there's a way to handle some of that. Because there's some encampments that are no longer there, but they have left their, their historical encampments with a profound amount of trash left out there. But there wasn't anybody at the time, but it's just, now it's just out there. So, um, it'd be nice to get a group together and take care of it. But you can't really do it individually because you can't, there's too many bags. There's no way to access it with a vehicle legally. It would, we need some sort of, some sort of help from a government agency to provide access.
Yeah. Um, I'm not too familiar with the location you're talking about, but you're saying it's off of Riverwalk. Is that like Chuxton Avenue or is that off, or off of like Stockdale Highway?
Well, Stockdale Highway, more for the, more just east of the Riverwalk Park. Where that riverbed runs, you know, the riverbed and the bike path runs along through there and, um, part of it, I'll, I'll ride in the dirt portion, you know, the more of the mountain back portion of that. And there's, you run across more of the encampments off the beaten path, of course. And, uh, that's where you see it. But there's several that are there. So, and they just went through and cleaned up a bunch of encampments that have been there for months and months. So they've, like I said, the majority of it's gone, but, you know, they do, they just kind of do it as broad strokes. So, anyway, I'll, I'll, if you can connect me to Jessica, I'll be happy to see what we can do on that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, do we have any other comments from anyone on the call regarding item number six? Okay, hearing none. Um, I'll move on to item number seven. Any committee member announcements or reports? Um, take this time to share anything we might have not covered or that you've been wanting to share with the committee? Please do so.
I got, um, if anybody is interested on June eighth, which is a Wednesday coming up, uh, we are having our first whitewater rafting cleanup of the year on the river. Um, this will be, this is the holiday cleanup, starting at nine AM and should go till about two or three. We'll be putting in near Keysville with the rafts and floating down to about the Hobo Campground and Miracle Hot Springs area. It's a free rafting event for anybody that wants to come volunteer. So you get to enjoy the river and then if there's trash or graffiti, we just stop, pick it up and, um, lunch is provided. It's a great way to experience that section of the river that I haven't seen before. That can only be seen through the road. So if anybody from this committee wants to come out, uh, reach out to me and let me know.
Do you have a flyer that, um, maybe Alicia could have and then send to the group so we could send it out? And then is there an age limit with, uh, children? Like, does it, does everyone need to be over eighteen or how does that work?
Um, I, we don't have a flyer because we have to keep the numbers down on the volunteers. Um, just between, we, we need room in the boats to keep all the trash. So we try to put two or three volunteers per boat. And we only take about fifteen, twenty people out on this trip. Uh, we prefer people over eighteen to come out just for safety reasons. Um, typically the kids are about to go rafting, but they stay in the boat. But in this instance, um, we have to go in and out of the boats, get in the water, um, you know, walk on shore and stuff like that. So to reduce safety issues, we just keep everybody over eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds fun, Gary. Thanks for sharing. A little tiny one?
You're muted, Alicia.
Okay. Any, anybody else have any items they want to share? Any committee members? Okay, uh, moving down to, um, item number eight. Any staff comment?
Yeah.
Okay, um, any comment from the public on the call? Okay, hearing none. Uh, let's move on to item number ten. Um, their next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, June fifteenth, from two to three PM. Just once again, we'll be talking, going over, um, cleanup supplies and voting on, on that as well. And then we'll begin the purchasing process after that. Okay, so, um, now I'd like to move on to item number eleven to adjourn the meeting at two forty PM. Uh, may I get a motion? To adjourn?
I make a motion. This is Dan.
Thank you, Dan. May I get a second?
I'll second it, Gary.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a second from Gary. Thank you, Linda. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, and any opposed? Okay, hearing none. Um, I'd like to, the motion carries and we'd like to adjourn meeting today. Thank you all for joining us and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you.
Thank you.